Good evening. Hello? I think I'm on there. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. I would invite you at this time to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to our meeting this evening, and we will begin with the superintendent's report. Dr. Henson.
Thank you, Mrs. Zila. I have a lot of information for you tonight under superintendent's report. We're going to start with the PowerPoint that's before you. We are pleased to announce that we have 21 Shawnee Mission students that have been named semifinalists in the 2015 National Merit Scholarship Program. The students now have the opportunity to compete with students around the country for approximately $33 million worth of scholarships that will be offered this next spring. So 21 National Merit semifinalists, certainly congratulations to these students, to their parents and their teachers as well. Wonderscope Children's Museum presented one of our teachers, Lisa Bergensen, a speech-language pathologist for the school district, the 2014 Early Educator of the Year Award. She was honored specifically for her enthusiasm and ability to engage parents as partners. I know some of you as board members were able to be there, and so congratulation to Lisa and this honor. The National Association of Music Education selected Shawnee Mission North Senior Annie Sensel to perform in the annual National Honors Symphony Orchestra. She is the first student in Shawnee Mission North history to receive the honor. As part of the honor, she's been invited to perform with the ensemble this fall in a concert in Nashville. So first student ever from North for this honor, so congratulations to Annie.
[applause] Are you here, Annie? Annie, would you stand up and be recognized tonight? It's a great honor. Congratulations.[305.33][305.33][applause] We don't embarrass you or put you on the spot or anything, but when do you go to Nashville?
Last weekend of October.
Last weekend of October. That's great. Congratulations. We're very proud of you. Shawnee Mission Schools made up the majority of Kansas schools being honored by the National PTA for their outstanding family-school partnerships. Shawnee Mission East, Shawnee Mission North, Shawnee Mission South, and Comanche Elementary were named National PTA Schools of Excellence. They are among only 170 schools in the nation and only six in the state of Kansas to be given the honor this year. So six in Kansas this year, and we have four of the six. And so again, congratulations to our PTA units from East, North, South, and Comanche. I don't know if we have any representatives from any of these buildings here tonight, but congratulations. This is a great honor. We are looking forward to the upcoming, as I mentioned in the work session, our education Fall Breakfast, Foundation Fall Breakfast, 7:00 a.m. this Thursday morning at the Convention Center. As you know, I'll present the State of the District address this Thursday morning. It's an exciting celebration for the start of the school year, as well as many achievements of our students and staff. Linda Roser's in the audience tonight, and Linda reports to us that the event is sold out, and so we're excited for Thursday for what we call the Smith Breakfast. We are also honored that this month, we have another special guest coming to the school district to make a presentation, Dr. Willard Daggett. He's the founder and chairman of the International Center for Leadership and Education. He will speak at 7:00 a.m. on September 30th at Shawnee Mission South Auditorium. And so again, we're looking forward to this exciting presentation. Dr. Daggett will be with us the entire morning, but the presentation for the community and other members of our business community and employees will be at 7:00 a.m. on September 30th. So we'll see you on the 25th at 7:00 and on the 30th at 7:00, and in both cases, that is 7:00 a.m. Those are a few of the exciting things that are going on in the school district that I wanted to share with you. I have several other pieces of information to share, and in trying to be paperless and emulate what many others are doing, I didn't print off these presentations, and so as I looked them up on my iPad. A couple of the things that I want to talk to you about tonight. Our legislative platform we will bring to you in October, as you know, two weeks ago now, two weeks ago, we had a meeting with all of our state legislators that represent us from the Shawnee Mission School District. We talked about a couple of things. One is in relation to our current legislative platform, and we talked about this in the work session, and the importance of that early intervention. So one of the things that remains, I think that will remain in our legislative platform, is asking the state for funding for full-day kindergarten. And so we saw from Mr. Grubman's presentation, early intervention is so very important. And so if you have changes or additions to our legislative platform, please get those to me, but in October, when we come back, we'll be presenting that legislative platform. But again, full-day kindergarten is something that, if we can get funding for full-day kindergarten, would be wonderful. We're still seeing our parents pay about $2 million annually for full-day kindergarten, and we're still absorbing a loss for full-day kindergarten, so a very significant funding issue for us. So if you have items for the legislative platform or updates or changes, please make sure you get those to us so we can have that legislative platform for 2015, which seems hard to believe, but for 2015 for you for the October Board meeting. At that meeting that I just mentioned two weeks ago, I also talked about the Efficiency Commission, which I'll briefly mention to you tonight. This is a sarcasm noted, a wonderful task that I have to be on this Efficiency Commission. I have given you the charge that we have by statute, and so you have a copy of that in relation to the statutory requirements of the Efficiency Commission. And so it's study and make recommendations to the legislature regarding opportunities to make more efficient use of taxpayer money, and those specific five charges. And I'm going to read those tonight for everybody for the sake of emphasis. More specifically, the statute requires the commission to study and review the following: How school districts may be more cost-effective in their operations; The difference in per-pupil expenses and administrative expenses among school districts with similar enrollment size; Student demographics and student assessment performance; How recommendations made by other efficiency task force, such as the Governor's School Efficiency Task Force, may be implemented; How school district administrative functions may be shared among multiple school districts; And, now if you can figure this one out for me, please help me, those school district expenditures that are not directly or sufficiently related to the goal of providing each child with the capacities described in, and it gives you those statutes, and specifically in relation to the Rose standards. So that's quite a topic of conversation. So our charge by statute, study and make recommendations to the legislature regarding opportunities to make more efficient use of taxpayer money. So that's what we're charged with doing. There is a draft, as of last week, of those recommendations. I think I want to make it very clear that, you know, I don't mind at all being quoted for what I say. I'm okay with that. I would just like people to quote me on what I really say in the context that I say it. And so I was quoted by a tweet out of that meeting with our legislators about the Efficiency Commission charge, somebody related to that to the Shawnee Mission School District, and I think that's inappropriate. So anybody that wants to tweet what I'm saying tonight, that's quite okay. Just use it in the context for what we're talking about tonight. That would be appreciated. So we've had two incidents in our district in the last two weeks where people have asked us to respond to what people had tweeted or said, and so we haven't done that. We haven't gotten in that tit-for-tat type of an issue, but that's an issue we have with social media right now and what people will say from microphones. And so that's the division for us, certainly in the school district. So Efficiency Commission, you'll see things coming out. That group meets again on October 8. There are some really interesting things in the Efficiency Commission report, but again, what's been determined thus far is then taken as a document and legislative research puts it into a format. We'll see what that looks like, and so we'll continue to proceed down that path. Again, on the legislative platform, if you have suggestions, please let me know. But again, I want to really emphasize that our request for funding for full-day kindergarten, so very important for the students of the Shawnee Mission School District. There is a group that's working in the metropolitan area, a part of the Greater Kansas City Chambers Big Five Initiatives in relation to early education and full-day kindergarten. And so one of the several reporters I was visiting with today was asking about, you know, how do we feel about that, and can we really have a regional concept in relation to early ed and full-day kindergarten? Well, one of the big differences, we fund full-day kindergarten a few miles to the east, and we don't fund it, and we need our state to fund that. Really important in the process. Strategic plan, we're ready to go. We have a lot of issues on the plate, and so we're ready, we're just waiting on that big splash opportunity, but it's in place, and we're working toward certainly those goals. We have two issues tonight, number two and number three, on your items that I want to spend a little bit of time talking about as well. And so we'll talk about the LOB election first because it's shorter. It allowed me to take a drink of water. And so as you know, the legislature allowed us to go from 31% to 33% on the LOB by a vote of the Board of Education, but then we are required by statute, we're going to continue that 33% LOB, to have a mail-in ballot. And so I'll give you some more information on that, but Bob, if you can describe to us what that means to the Shawnee Mission School District, please.
Sure. In 2013-14, the statutes allowed the districts to do a maximum of 31% LOB, which is a local option budget based on the percent of your general fund. That amount in 2013-14 was $56,158,000. In 2014-15, the statute was changed, as Dr. Henson said, to allow districts to levy a 33% of their general fund on a local option budget. That amount was $60,794,000, which is approximately a $4.6 million increase between years. The mill levy in 13-14 to support that local option budget was $17.357. $17.357 of the total mill levy of the district was used to support the LOB. In 2014-15, even though we received $4.6 million more, the mill levy was decreased to $17.32 because of a couple of factors. One was an increasing assessed value. The district levies the amount to the assessed value of the district. The assessed value in the district increased 4%, which meant that we had to levy less to garner that amount of money. And in 14-15, the district qualified for state equalization of the local option budget. The district received approximately $4 million for that state equalization. This was the first time the district has been able to garner that amount because that amount is calculated on an annual basis based on the assessed value of the state and where districts fall in that ranking. This was the first year we fell below the 80% ranking in the state, probably because of some oil and gas reserve districts out in western Kansas. And so that is calculated each year, so that doesn't necessarily mean we'll get it every year, but it's calculated every year. We've received it this year, and hopefully we'll receive it next year. Based on those scenarios, if the district was to maintain the 33 mill levy for next year as the legislation allows, we really have not very much of a net gain of authority. It's going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars net gain of authority because since we already have it budgeted, this is just a continuation to allow us to expend at the same level. If we received the state aid at the same level, the mill levy would actually decrease by about four or five tenths to $16.9. However, like I say, we can't anticipate that state aid to be the same amount next year because the calculation hasn't occurred yet. If we don't receive any state aid at all, the levy will increase by a few decimal points because we'd have to levy that amount based on our local assessed value. And so to make this short, we're not going to receive any increase in funding availability because we've already had it budgeted. The local levy that'll take to support it will either decrease or increase slightly based on the amount of state aid we're going to receive. Hopefully that explains it a little bit.
Everybody's clear as mud on that.[1066.33][1066.33][laughter] So by going to the 31% to 33% mill levy, that took our mill levy for LOB, for the local option budget, took it from $17.357 down to $17.322. And I know that it's hard for everybody to understand, but when you add in assessed valuation and then the equalization from the state, so it actually decreased the mill levy or the tax rate for individuals. So to continue that same 33% or mill levy, we are required by statute to take that issue to the voters of the school district. Shawnee Mission, along with at least the majority of other districts in the state, are looking at the potential of a mail-in ballot for the LOB in January. And so we meet again on October 6, and so my plan is to bring back to you on October 6 to put a mail ballot issue before our voters in January. And again, I know we haven't had a mail-in ballot before, but this isn't an option for us. This is what's in the statute. Don't ask me to explain that, but it's in the statute. And so where we are currently, again, projecting the future, what it does with equalization and our assessed valuation, but this year, your vote to move the percentage from 31% to 33% decreased the mill levy or tax rate from $17.357 to $17.322. Everybody with me on that? Does that make sense? So on the, sort of, kind of, on the local option budget. So let me try to paraphrase it a different way. So this is statutory, something that has occurred. It increased the LOB, is what it's done to the mill rate, but if it's going to continue by statute, it has to be a mail-in ballot. It has to be this school year. This is the operational fund. So this is not what we're building buildings with or anything else. This is our operational fund and how the LOB or the local option budget impacts it. Okay? Okay, switching gears. The other item I want to report out to you is in relation to a potential bond issue, and so I will be redundant, but just for the sake of everyone. In the 11-12 school year, we had a facilities committee that functioned, and they looked at needs of the Shawnee Mission School District, basically in relation to facilities. Now, that's broad, and I'll break that down for you as we get into the discussion, but basically in relation to facilities. So the information that came out of the facilities committee in the 11-12 school year that has been or that was tabled. So in the spring of this year, we reconvene the facilities committee, expanded the facilities committee a little bit. They have been in the process, and these are individuals from the community, whether they're business individuals, parents of students, employees. They came together and they reviewed the 11-12, and a part of that review, 11-12 report, part of that review to say is what's pertinent, what's changed, what's already been addressed, what do we want to carry forward. The committee also discussed, and some of the members of the committee are in the audience tonight, some of the things that were discussed were what is that we want, that we need, that we don't have, what's changed since the 11-12 school year. And then some individuals took a tour and looked at some things in other school districts and other places to say, we want to make sure that we're not only looking at what we have, but what are other districts doing and providing for their students as well. So that was a very robust, great conversation. It is always great to see what's taking place in other locations because sometimes that broadens our horizons as well. As a result of, and I didn't count the number of meetings or the number of hours that we met as well, their report out to me, their direction or their charge, or whatever you want to call it, was to bring to you the potential for a bond issue. And so I'm going to go down through the projects that would be a part of any potential bond issue. One of the things that we know we have as a school district is new development that's taking place in the school district. And so that's an exciting opportunity for us to see really what's taking place. You'll see some more of that Thursday morning about what's going on with student enrollment. One of the things that's outlined is in relation to a new elementary school in each of the five high school feeder areas. Now, let me break that down a little bit. We've identified potential rebuilds in some of the feeder areas. We have not identified a potential rebuild in the west feeder area at this point, and here's why. We're watching very intently what's taking place in the Lenexa City Center area, 435-87th and 95th corridor, trying to work with the city and developers to say what's really going to happen there. Will we, as we monitor this process, year, two years down the road, need to make the decision that we need an additional elementary school? So we're watching that very carefully. So we've designated a school for the west feeder area. The money would be set aside. The question is, is it a building that needs to be raised and rebuilt because certainly there's at least one candidate? Or, being prudent and watching to see what happens with enrollment, do we need to look at an additional elementary school? So that's something that we'll monitor. So looking at those that are in the other areas that we're looking at would be rebuilds of. We want a drum roll or anything else? Benninghoven Elementary School, we've talked about that for a number of years. Crestview Elementary School, talked about West. Trailwood and Briarwood. The issues that we're working through are some of these sites you can raise the building and rebuild on the current site while you're still in school, that building, like what is going on at Shawano. Some we cannot. So we would have to move the student population, the school setting, if you will, off-site for about two years while construction occurs. So those are elementary schools in each of the five high school areas, again, the caveat on West. In relation to all of our elementary schools, a very clear goal that we would like a separate cafeteria from the gymnasium in each of our elementary schools. Because of the rebuilds, the only elementary school that we would need to have in addition to make sure they had a separate cafeteria from gymnasium would be Brookwood. So Brookwood is slated to have an addition so they would have a separate cafeteria from the gymnasium, so every single one of our elementary schools would have a separate cafeteria from the gymnasium. And if you've ever worked in an elementary school, you know, that's a big issue. Kitchen remodels. We discussed that we would like, and it's carried over from 11-12, a full-service kitchen in each of our schools. Simply what that means is that we would not prepare food at one site, and then we would truck it, if you will, to another site, that we would prepare food on the same site where we're serving that food. And so because of the schools that we would rebuild, then we would need to have a full-service kitchen at Corinth, Deemer, Tomahawk, and Westwood. The other schools that don't have would be new schools or rebuilds that would be in that process. Something that is a part of what we're hearing from parents and certainly resonated with the facilities committee was to put a terraflex floor in all of our elementary gymnasiums that have carpet. And so if you're familiar with Briarwood's gymnasium floor, there are a few others, Mill Creek, the parents brought that to us as well. We have another elementary, they brought that to us. So it would be replacing the carpet out of those gymnasium floors. It's more like a look-alike, if you will, hardwood-type floor. It is not hardwood, but it's a look-alike in that regard. Set aside money, if we can figure out how to do it, to remodel the east high school cafeteria. So we hear a lot about that issue, and so architects and engineers are saying, how would we make that happen? And so that's what we're trying to figure out, but that's something that's been on the docket for quite some time. The early education sites, we've talked about having early education site, not a separate facility, but a site in each of our high school feeder areas. So as we look at that, some of the rebuilds, like a Crestview would include it in there, so it would not be remodeling or renovation or an addition, but looking at Pawnee, then we talked about rebuild of Trailwood, and then Highlands as well would go to those sites. We're doing that at Shawano now. So we would have those sites, sites being three or four classrooms as a part of the building, so Shawano, Pawnee, Trailwood rebuild, Crestview rebuild, and certainly Highlands as well. The goal, the theory, is the current SMISC building. The current SMISC building, we would move early education into each of our five high school feeder areas. Raise the SMISC building. It's not worth saving the building. Keep the property. Because as we look at the development that is planned in the discussions from the various cities, we certainly need to keep that property because it could be the potential for an additional school site in the future. We talked about, and I think you have information as well, another announcement last week about one of our golf courses within the boundaries of our school district that's sold, and so waiting to see what plans are finalized in that regard. In relation to other issues for schools, and so there are a lot of these, we need to replace field turf at our high schools. This would be adding a second field turf, not a stadium, only a practice surface at each of our high schools. That's a significant need for us, and also that same surface at each of the middle schools. As you know, we're going to talk tonight about middle school sports as well, but where we're headed in the future. A lot of money for heating and air conditioning. I call it HVAC. So it's interesting to note, in the '94 bond issue, we made sure that we air-conditioned all our buildings. Guess what? When you air-condition them all at the same time, they start coming due all at the same time. And so there's actually, right now, our estimate's about $20 million just for HVAC work that needs to take place. We hear a lot from our employees about some incon- We hear a lot from our employees about some inconsistencies in HVAC and some needs that occur there, and so these things need to be addressed. We also have extensive work that needs to take place in roof, see if I can say that, roof replacement work there. We have floor and ceiling tile that needs to be replaced, and so old floor tile, ceiling tile. Every building will have work. Every building. So, as we've gone through all of our buildings, those that we haven't replaced the floor tile, we don't have suspended ceilings, all of that work would take place. We have quite a bit of plumbing and electrical work that needs to occur as well. Security upgrades. We've heard a very clear message from our community through our surveys about security upgrades. As you know, 16 buildings now, but the remainder of the buildings, some of those buildings are really costly, as we have to do pinch points and move some of those offices to the front. And again, we've tried to structure some of the rebuilds, so if they needed an office moved to the front, if they needed the cafeteria that would be full service, all those issues, put those into packages. With the security upgrades, high school front entries at all of our high schools for those pinch points, I mean, that's an expensive endeavor, but to really help provide security in that area. So, the security upgrades, the high school front entries, that's a very significant initiative and endeavor for us. We need to continue our technology expansion. Drew Lane talked to us a little bit tonight about some of the needs briefly in relation to the infrastructure backbone, and some of that wiring and closets and those things. So, technology certainly is there. And we have some, your typical things, your asphalt, parking lot repairs, sidewalks, those things that we're always needing to do. Something that's a carryover as well from the 11-12, information, request to upgrade the little theaters in each of our high schools. So, we've slated improvements to the little theaters in all of our high schools, and so their needs vary from sound systems to other interior work that needs to take place, but that's a part of the project as well. We have some furniture upgrades that we've budgeted in. We have media center upgrades, and let me quantify media center upgrades. One of the spots in relation to a tour was at the prior Learning Commons at William Jewel College in Liberty, Missouri, and looking at their teamwork, their collaboration. And so, people came back, and some of you were on that tour as well, to see what's going on there, to say, "Can we make some of our open areas, common areas, library and media centers, those teamwork, those collaborative technology spaces?" And so, we've set aside money in order for that to happen as well. All right, deep breath, two other things that we've talked about, the South, the district stadium at South. Is that a better way to say it? The district stadium at South. We have some structural upgrades that need to take place there, and so we need to rebuild the South stadium structurally. So, I'm talking about the bleacher components there that take place. And so, that's something that needs to take place. The other issue that we've talked about is something that we don't have, and so it's an exciting thing for the Shawnee Mission School District, and it's kind of interesting how this occurred. One of the things that we learned in the facilities committee, other than a dual meet, you know, where we host our meets beyond dual meets, we rent a middle school in the Olathe School District. That's where we go when we host these events. And so, the committee has been to, several people have been over to the Lee Summit School District to see their aquatic center as well. And so, we've slated in a state-of-the-art aquatic center, and I'll explain to you what all that means. This is something that is a 50-meter competitive pool with your diving wells. There is not one in Johnson County at all, and so it would be state-of-the-art. It would allow us to do several things, and of course, it allows us to host any of the meets that we want to host. It allows us also to make sure that we have the opportunity for all of our elementary students to go through the Learn to Swim program, so that every student that goes through the Shawnee Mission School District has an opportunity for free swim lessons in the second and the third grade. And so, it provides that opportunity. As a part of this package, there are some pool upgrades for existing five high schools, so it's not eliminating those pools, but it's a separate standalone facility in that regard. The other issue that's attached to the aquatic center that we're still working out, details. So, the question has become, what do we do in relation to a student and employee wellness facility? As you know, it's one of our themes. And so, we've been in conversation with the family YMCA in relation to if we attached a structure as a part of the aquatic center that would be used for not only our employees as an employee wellness center, our students, specifically high school and middle school students. So, that's a part of their access. Can it also be made available to the public through the YMCA, so they could use it as a Y facility, but they're providing these services to our employees and to our students, potentially, maybe potentially at a reduced cost to our patrons? That's not a promise. We're having conversation about what that would really, what that would really look like. And that the Y would be responsible for the operations of the aquatic center. Now, why is that so very important? That is important, because the operational side, out of the operating budget, would not be a drain on the Shawnee Mission School District. So, it is something that we own the facility, but under a management agreement, the Y has the responsibility in relation to the fiscal operation side. The benefits for us, employee-student wellness, we can talk a long time about that, the Learn to Swim program, all students, the benefits in that regard as well. The details of the potential partnership with the Y, we have not finalized yet. We're getting close. I am not going to guarantee you that we're going to get the details finalized. So, we're in serious discussion with them, but we have not finalized any type of potential agreement that would come to you yet. Okay, I need a drink of water again. So, those are all of the projects. So, these projects total $223 million. Now, $223 million is a zero, no mill levy increase for the patrons of the school district. This is not a taxes increase at all. So, we can issue bonds with voter approval for $223 million with no mill levy increase. Now, we're talking about mill levies. Our mill levy for bond, we're going to show you something on Thursday, and I don't want to preempt, but somebody else is going to explain operating fund and capital outlay and bond levy, and they're a whole lot more entertaining, so we'll try to explain that and roll that out. But our bond levy is a little over seven mill levy in the Shawnee Mission School District. That is less than half of any other school district in Johnson County. This would not increase our mill levy at all. So, people ask, "Well, you know, how does that happen?" Well, some of you know, we prepaid bonds for several years, assessed valuation is increasing, and so that allows us to issue bonds without raising the tax levy at all. So, let me try to put that back in the mix again. So, all the projects that I have mentioned to you tonight totaled are $223 million, and will refine dollar amounts over the next few days before October 6. I intend to bring this back to you with the LOB levy as well. That's part of what we need help with, how to explain the LOB levy, and how to explain the bond levy, and why do we have to have a mail-in? And so, there's a huge educational component there, but we have an opportunity to put a question on the ballot, which we are required by statute to have, for a bond issue without any additional cost for calling for an election for a bond issue, because we're already having an election. It's a second question on the ballot. And then, understanding that all of the projects that I've talked to you about tonight, that is a no-mill levy, no increase in our tax rate for the bond levy for the Shawnee Mission School District. So, I can talk to you the next 30 minutes about that. You don't want that to occur. That's what we're working on. Thoughts, questions, comments, input?
Questions, comments?
It's exciting.
It's a very exciting list of projects there, and I think it's exciting to hear about redevelopment happening within our boundaries, too. We felt so landlocked for so long that we have opportunities for new kids and new schools, possibly, so it's great. The aquatic center, I think, is a thrilling idea. I think it hits on wellness for our, for our community, for our, our, our school community, for our students. It's just a win-win, as well as being a great draw for the city. So, I'm excited. It sounds like a, like a wonderful array of things. Mrs. Mack?
Dr. Hinson, you mentioned real briefly the surveys, and I just, I find it appropriate to say that the parent surveys and our demographic study that was done, we paid to have that information, and we're using it, because I noticed some of the same themes are going into the, what you presented tonight. And so, I'm really appreciative that we are using that information from our community and from, the facilities committee did an outstanding job. They worked very, very hard, and I know all of us are thankful for them, but it's nice to have community stakeholders as well who participated in the surveys, to have their input be heard. Thank you.
As you know, we had the patron insight survey, the survey they conducted for us in June. That was also a survey that was online for individuals, for faculty, and staff as well. And so, we received that input. We have the 11-12 facilities committee, we have this facilities committee as well. One of the exciting, many things, but one of the exciting things, it provides the opportunity for us to touch every building in the school district, which I think is extremely beneficial, but it also helps us prepare some things for the future, because as we look at some of the rebuilds, we look at size and proximity. There's a lot of, and again, I know that I'm being repetitive to you, but sometimes it's hard to communicate en masse everything that we're all hearing, but all of the developments that are either in process or being discussed right now, that are within the boundaries of our school district. So, for example, when I mentioned to you about the early ed centers, but then the former Katherine Carpenter Building, SMISK Building now, we are not disposing of that site. That is a potential school site in the future. And so, as we look at other things that we have going on, Briarwood and Indian Creek, and so the opportunities for us to be prepared for the future. So, whether it's Vision Metcalf in Everland Park, whether what's going on in the city of Westwood, whether it's the city of Lenexa, other projects in Prairie Village and the city of Everland Park, that we're in discussion with the developers in the cities as where, as well. It's an exciting time for us. And so, to the best of everybody's knowledge, we're trying to prepare for the things that people are planning on, or at least talking about, but it's an exciting time for us. So, a couple of weeks, we'll have all this finalized. Plan is to bring it back to you on October 6. So, if you have any other questions, thoughts, input, let me know. But again, explaining and really helping educate, okay, why do we have to have the mail-in ballot on the LOB, and then the bond issue, and that's out of the bond mill levy? And, okay, the bond mill levy is, you know, less than half of any other school district in the county, but it's not going to increase, and we're still able to do this. So, it's a huge educational component in the process, but still an exciting opportunity on both fronts, I guess, if you will, for the Shawnee Mission School District.
Absolutely. And the safety and security in every single building, that is huge as well. So, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Hinson? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move on to open forum. At the beginning of each regular business meeting, the Board of Education provides an open forum as an opportunity for public comment on school district issues. Agendas are published in advance to notify the community of topics under consideration. Patron comments are welcome, but those wishing to speak to an issue not included in the agenda will not usually receive a response during the meeting. For those of you that were here at the last meeting, this is also not a time for vendors to come forward, but you would think that wouldn't have to be mentioned. But anyway, our first speaker tonight is Brendan Davison. Brendan, I don't know how long you're going to speak to us, but if you could keep it within about five minutes, or something like that, that'd be awesome.
That's what I prepared for.
Very good, thank you.
Can I go ahead and close this, or?
Oh, I don't know.
If you close it, it'll stop.
It'll...
Is there a thing that pulls out to the side?
Yeah, there.
That's the Shawnee Mission.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay. Good evening. As I say, my name is Brendan Davison. I am a junior at Shawnee Mission Northwest, and I am here to address you about the issue of the, of excessive censorship on this new technology. First, I'd like to say thank you to the school board and to the district at large for providing every high school student, including myself, with this technology. This has been a great step forward for our education, and it has also given us greater connectivity to the world around us. However, while we have been entrusted with the safety of these devices, we have not been entrusted with the basic liberties or responsibilities that come with the use of this device. Instead, the district has chosen to enact severe censorship measures and strip us of these liberties. The freedoms of speech, press, expression, and information are all protected by the U.S. Constitution, and all of which are being threatened by these censorship measures. The ACLU, the American Civil Liberties Union, has filed several lawsuits on the behalf of students who are being excessively censored on school computers in Delaware, Rhode Island, and Tennessee. While several of these cases are still pending litigation, the vast majority of these cases, which have gone through the courts, wound up with the court's ruling in favor of the students, finding that the school districts were in violation of the Constitution and mandating that the censorship programs be severely curtailed. In one such case in Rhode Island, the court, the settlement agreed to by both parties stated that students would be allowed to access any website during the school day that had potential educational relevance, and after school, they would be allowed to access any website that was not, and I quote, "absolutely inappropriate for students." And while the district is required by both state and federal law to protect students from inappropriate content such as hate speech and pornography, we, the district has taken this far beyond what they are required to do, censoring websites that serve actual educational purposes. This is counterintuitive and harmful to our educations. This must be ended immediately. In addition, social media, which is a distraction for students during the school day, should be censored then, but after the school day, it is an important form of communication, not just amongst peers and friends, but also for clubs and school-sanctioned organizations trying to organize their activities. They, they should be allowed to access social media and other forms of communication like this after the school day ends, so they can organize these events. Additionally, the school district has restricted our ability to download certain softwares. While restricting this ability is important, so we do not download software that is either pirated or fraudulent, or that contains harmful, harmful things like malware or viruses. They are, our ability to download important plugins and extensions such as Java and Unity Player, which are important for certain interactives and videos on educational websites, which I have used in the past in classes. Additionally, we have not been able to download file-sharing programs such as Dropbox, which are very important for students who, when they are sharing projects with other students during peer presentations and other similar projects. They should be allowed to download these, so we can continue with this operation, with the basic operations that the computers need to provide. Now, for these and other reasons, we, I am speaking on behalf of multiple students I have spoken to, have proposed the following solutions. First, the easing of the current restrictions after the end of the school day, to allow us to access various websites, including social media, under the condition that censorship continues on websites which explicitly or primarily contain inappropriate material. Second, we request that we be given increased downloading freedom, and so we can download these things, such as Java and Unity Player and Dropbox, onto our computers. And then finally, we would ask that we be given a technology handbook via PDF. We have not been given one so far. All we have been given is the school rulebook, and we ask that this technology handbook outline not only the rules and restrictions on our computers, but we also ask that it include parts from the apple manuals as well. And while I know that these specific requests are not on the agenda tonight, I know there are related motions on the agenda, and I ask that you keep my thoughts in mind when you come to these for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Our next speaker is Larry Nguyen.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. My name is Larry. My name is Larry Nguyen. I'm co-chair of the Committee for Excellence in Shawnee Mission. With me is Brent Fuson, my co-chair. And we're here tonight to tell you that we've listened to Dr. Henson's proposal. We know you have a lot of discussion yet to do, but when it gets to that time, if it gets to that time, you need our help, we're ready to go. We're genuinely enthusiastic. I never thought I'd ever stand at this, in this room, at this podium and talk about a growing school district. I thought I'd been there, done that, that wasn't going to happen anymore. But we're tremendously enthused about the growth in the district. And again, when you, when you're ready, we're ready. Call on us if you need us. I particularly, Donna, was, the discussion about the Aquatic Center brings back some memories of about 10 years ago, because we were kind of headed down that path at that point and couldn't quite figure out how to get there. But I know very well about the demand for that type of facility and what it could bring to the district should you decide to do it. So, again, we're meeting as early as what, Wednesday, Brent? And we're kind of making an assumption that you might proceed with this. And should you decide to do so, we'll be there with you. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. And our last speaker tonight is Melissa Rooker.
Thank you. I'm Melissa Rooker. I live at 4124 Brookridge Drive in Fairway, and I serve as State Representative for the 25th District. It's clear from the scope of the presentation on the bond proposals that this is a very busy district and requires a lot of attention from the superintendent and the board member. I serve as a state-level representative who values and, and believes in local control and, and the work that the local board participates in. But we have been, I'm here tonight to talk about, to circle back to the K-12 Commission and the work that Dr. Henson has been doing there. I think it bears noting that this was born out of a highly-charged political debate and had the potential to do, I, in my opinion, tremendous harm to the interests of K-12 education, not just in any one particular district, but statewide. And I want to acknowledge the hard work, the due diligence, the research, and the fresh point of view that Dr. Henson has brought to the process. I think it's been important. We have, I, I've been attending the meetings and watching the progress, and the, the list of topics are things that we have, as a state, been grappling with over and over again, making no progress along the way. And it's been refreshing to have a new set of eyes and a perspective coming from experience outside the state of Kansas. And I, I just, I wanted the board and the patrons of this district to know that the time that this commission has required has, I can't even imagine how many hours you've spent outside that, that commission room on the topic, even as you juggle all of these other issues for our district specifically. But I just wanted to come here tonight and thank you and make sure that we put on the record that you have done a tremendous job of guiding the process in a manner that I think the outcome could be positive if we follow through on our end of things and actually create some of the study committees that will be called for in the final report. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rooker. Okay, we will move on to the approval of the regular meeting of August 18.
So, move.
Thank you, Dr. Denny.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodfarb. Is there any discussion or correction on the minutes? Okay, saying none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you. Move on to the adoption of the agenda.
I move for the adoption of the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Mack.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you. We will move on to the approval of routine business by consent. Is there any item that any board member would like removed? Mrs. Bisfield?
I would like to remove H2. And with that, I will also move approval of routine business by consent, except for the item H2.
Thank you. Is that Mrs. Neber? Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda omitting H2, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, seven zero. We will now deal with H2. Mrs. Bisfield?
I would move the following proclamation. Whereas the purpose of high school activities is to extend education beyond the formal classroom setting, and whereas participation in activities teaches our youth that it is a privilege and an honor to represent this level of high school. And whereas the community should be made aware of the cooperation, dedication, leadership, and other important values gained by students involved in student activities, and whereas the men and women working in school activities spend many hours guiding students, now therefore, the Shawnee Mission Board of Education hereby proclaims October 12th through the 18th, 2014 as Kansas High School Activities Week in Shawnee Mission and encourages the community to reaffirm their support of high school activities and to show appreciation to the directors of those activities.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Neber. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, seven zero. And with that, we will move down to the action item O, Business Services.
So, the approval of Construction Manager Contract Services, this is new. I know this is a surprise to you, but this is a new opportunity for us as a district. And so, let me explain to you where we are currently. And so, as you know, we've been in discussion to say, can we take this site? Can we take Broadmoor? Can we take Arrowhead? Can we take Indian Creek? And can we put those facilities and functions at one site? And so, we've had architects now that have been working on the potential plan for the Antioch Middle School Site that would take all of those administrative functions. And the goal there is because it saves us money. And the potential savings of operational cost could be significant. And so, we're not talking about a hundred thousand, we're getting up into the millions of dollars. And so, it's a huge initiative for us. There's another side to that, so hang on to that as well. But also taking some of our signature programs and putting them at the site as well. For example, the Bistro Culinary Arts Program, if this comes to fruition, the Bistro would move to this location. They would have an opportunity to have a much larger seating capacity that would be easily accessed from the front door. And so, we would have the state-of-the-art Bistro Culinary Arts Program in, in that location, along with administrative services. We would also have our biomedical biotechnology, maybe, and a new, maybe, a new technology signature program as well as we work with our technology providers in the school district. So, it'll be several more months before the architects really have anything for us to look at. We're trying to be really, really diligent in looking at two things. One is in relation to the signature programs, because we want to make sure we get it right. We want to make sure that they have the space, the equipment, everything that they really need and want. And then in relation to taking those sites of administrative services and looking at those individuals that are located currently in one of those buildings to say, where are they serving students? What are their functions? Do they need to be in a school building somewhere in closer proximity to the students they're serving? And our goal is to significantly shrink the administrative services in the district down to a single site from those four sites. So, in addition, so another caveat, so in addition, we would like to take our operations and maintenance site, our warehouse site, and have the site where our lease company for our transportation, where they house buses, have that on a single location. So, we're trying to shrink our administrative services. Now, we are not able to take the operations and maintenance and warehouse and transportation and put them at the Antioch Middle School Site, so you can imagine why. But we looked at it just to make sure we knew the answer. But the, the goal is, can we take, again, the administrative services from this building, from Arrowhead, from Broadmoor, from Indian Creek, and put them on a single site and shrink that administrative footprint? And have signature programs there as well, those that I mentioned, not all the signature programs in the school district, but those that I mentioned. And so, that's what we're working on, but we're trying to be very diligent in the process. So, again, we're a few months away from, from making that happen. Now, before I get to this proposal and what this really means, because Dr. Southwick's going to explain that to us tonight, a part of really our study or demographic study and working with our developers and our planners, the goal is, we very possibly need those sites that I mentioned, Indian Creek, Broadmoor, as school sites for the Shawnee Mission School District. We certainly know, for example, to rebuild Briarwood, we cannot rebuild on the same site where we have school. So, we, we need an alternative site to have, I hate to say school offsite, but to move the student school population to a different location. At the same time, as we go through the construction cycle, if we see development at the Brookridge Golf Course, which you saw the announcement that sold, if we see everything that's planned for Vision Metcalf and other locations as well, the possibility of us needing additional school sites is real. But this would allow us to be proactive and not reactive, where we're not out searching for property. There's a plan, we're just waiting for, for it, for the fruition of that plan, so we're ready to go. So, hopefully, all that makes sense, though. There are so many different moving parts, but you know, we're studying all that, there's a plan, we're prepared, we're proactive. As a part of the potential Center for Academic Achievement, so think about, think about it in this regard, where we are right now and looking at the Indian Creek Building, the administrative space at this potential site, for, for the four buildings, would be less than half the size of Indian Creek. So, that's a pretty significant shift for us, begin, it frees up those magical operational dollars, which are so very important to us in the process. So, anyway, another component of what's going on, but this construction management at risk, Dr. Southwick, explain this to, for us, explain this to us tonight, please.
Well, I have to, Mr. Robinson's here, and we're going to kind of tag team and try to answer whatever questions that you have. What you have in your backup information is an explanation, it was put together, the process that we've gone through to look at Construction Manager at Risk. The district primarily in the past, as, as I've been able to gather our institutional history, have really looked at construction services two ways. First, just a general contractor. And to give a little bit of lesson on that, what that would be, is the district would hire an architect, they'd develop a scheme and a plan, they'd take that to bid, you'd have a general contractor that would bid on that, most generally, you would take the lowest cost for that, and that's who you partner with from the point, from that point on until you open the building. And that's, that's looking at what they call a GC. The other process that the district's been involved in, it's what's called Construction Manager Agency. And at that point in time, once that construction manager's hired, then they come forward and they work with the architect team and they work with the district to look at what the program should be. They help with the cost and with the design of the building. And then they basically go out to work with the district to secure subs that can provide the services that we need to build our buildings. The thing about Construction Management Agency is, though, they don't hold the contract. And the district, if we, if you think about all of the different trades that we would have in a building that we build, the district could hold somewhere between 30 and 40 individual contracts with subs to deliver that building. And all the warranties apply across all of those contracts. So, it, it's good to do in, in certain situations, but the problem that we have is anytime, and I'm sure you're aware, that we might have a change order where we wanted to add some value to the project or maybe where, we hate to say it, but sometimes there are some things that are missed. And once the board approves that, then an individual contract adjustment has to be made with every single vendor that we have that's out there. So, we have available to us in Kansas, something that's called Construction Manager at Risk. And the, the value, I think, on, on projects is, it gives us an opportunity to, early in the design phase, begin to look at what's the, what's the project going to be, what's the overall budget of the project. And then we sit down with the partnership between the district and all its staff, between the architect and engineers that we've hired, and the person that's going to be responsible to give us that price at the end of the day to move forward, to build that building. And when we can bring that contractor on as a construction manager, but also as the person that's going to be, that's going to hold the contract, now we deal with one person. And in the construction world, they call that one throat to choke. So, when there's an issue, we go to one person. We're not in a fight between, well, the plumber didn't do this, the electrician didn't do that, if he got this done, I would have been on time, and since he didn't do that, now I'm going to have to ask for additional money. We get rid of all of that. So, Mr. Robinson, I've got to give him credit, did the investigation for what it would take as a district for, to go through the process to examine Construction Manager at Risk, to meet all the timelines by state law in terms of the interview and the selection process and to move forward. And that's, that's what we've done tonight. So, a little bit of history and a little bit of lesson about construction and, and management and services as we move forward. And we do have a recommendation for you tonight of a company. So, Bob, if you've got some comments, and then we'll...
The only thing I'd like to say is, we, we interviewed, started out of seven companies. We took four of those and have extensive interviews, myself, Kenny, and Bruce Kreutzl, and a couple of architects interviewed the group. We really felt we had four good groups. All of the companies we interviewed, I think, could have done a good job for us, but we selected one of them as our, our selection, and that was J.E. Dunn. I had did some projects with them in the past and had, had good success with that. They're, they're one of the largest companies in the area. And pricing-wise, they were the low bid in this case. That wasn't the reason we looked at them, we looked at everything in conjunction, and we felt that they were the best company for us at the time.
We did look at a rubric in terms of a grading scale, and we assigned points to this, you know, we have to assign points to everything we do, or, for some reason. But we looked at the experience as a construction manager, and that basically was 25 points. Past performance of the CM, and that was around 30 points. Proposed personnel of the management team, when we did the interviews, we asked those companies to bring the teams to us that would be there from start to finish, because we think the collaboration of all of the players will give us a chance to have a successful program. Reputation, 10 points. Financial strength, we want to make sure that we bring somebody on board that's going to be there at the end. We don't want to cash anybody's bond in and have to finish our building that way. And the cost, which, which Bob said, particularly the recommendation we're going to make, they were the lowest, but it wasn't the major point factor in terms of whether we selected them or not. It received 20 points. Across all of that, again, to reiterate what Bob said, I think the recommendation that we have, to come onboard as a true partner with us, to, to consider and design and put together the work and be a part of the team of what we think can be a world-class building, efficient building, but also just a tremendous opportunity for world-class programs for our students. We're recommending tonight that we go with J.E. Dunn.
Are there any questions by any board members? Concerned? Mrs. Neber?
I just asked a question, and I just want clarification and so that I understand this whole process there. J.E. Dunn did East. That's where the stairs were missed in the music room. So, they're not the construction people, they are the management side.
They are the management side, but they have fiscal liability now. And so, if there is a problem, and that's why the importance of bringing them onboard now, so they can work with the architects through the process, but now they have fiscal liability through the process to make sure the project is done, is completed correctly, but they are not the construction company. Does that make any sense?
It does.
Okay.
So, if something is missed, like that huge amount of stairs, they're responsible?
They're responsible.
Or we're paying for it?
No, they're responsible.
They're on the hook. And that's one of the benefits of... And that's one of the benefits of that risk versus just construction manager, because they will generally walk away from a project. They've done their job, and if we have a concern, we're trying to track down those subs that were involved in the process.
Mrs. Mack? Does a services contract come out, operating or capital?
This is a capital expenditure.
Thank you. Mrs. Bisfield?
Well, I was going to make a motion, unless you want to...
Okay, let me see if there's any other questions here, comments? Okay, Mrs. Bisfield?
I would move approval of, oh, one, the approval of Construction Managers Contractor Services. And I have a little caveat at the end. Could we call it for the anti-oxite and kind of figure out what we really want to call it as it comes into being?
This is just a placeholder. Yes, ma'am.
Second? Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. We'll move on to Superintendent Action, Dr. Henson.
We have tonight...
A couple?
A long list of policies. And so, I want to make sure, I think we are on the same page, but I want to make sure that we're on the same page after our discussion last month. So, 1 through 39, 38, 1 through 38 are the second readings.
Correct.
So, if my understanding is correct, we agreed that we would have a second reading, but we could approve the second reading en masse, that we wouldn't go through each one of those individually. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so, on that note, I want to say this again. So, Dr. Chapman, Dr. Denny, Donna Bisfield, and Sarah Goodburn, this is a lot of work. This is a tremendous amount of work. And so, what we have before you tonight, then, would be the second reading of policies, 1 through 38.
Mrs. Neighbors?
I would move approval of the second reading policies, 1 through 38.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Any discussion? Mrs. Levens?
May I ask a procedural question? The, I'm wondering if we can remove items 28 and 36 for future discussion, or would it be best to pass those now and revisit them later?
I believe it'd be better to pass them now. We can change policy at any board meeting, as the policy states. So, we could bring those back if there's a question that wasn't thought of in the first reading of those policies. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay. All those in favor of policies 1 through 38, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Dr. Henson?
Okay, let's start on 39. And so, reminding you that these have been vetted by the group that I've mentioned to you. So for those that are listening tonight, and those in the audience, we're in a year-long process of board policy review. We've had the Kansas Association of School Boards and their council that's gone through all of our policies and made suggestions and recommendations. And then again, three of our board members and Dr. Chapman are going through each of these to make sure that they specifically apply to the Shawnee Mission School District in any amendments or changes. And so, what we have tonight are the first reading of all of the policies that are before you. And so, they start with 39, numeral 39, which is in relation to school site councils, and the board's aware, this is a statutory requirement that we have in place. And so, as we go down through these, if you have specific questions or comments on any of these, you can make those now, you can submit those to the task force as well, if you so desire. And if you have grammatical changes or suggestions, submit those to Terry Wintering, and so she can make those. But again, this is the first reading. All of these will come back to you next month for the second reading. And so, I won't, we won't go through each one of those, 39 through, but if there are those that you want to call out or question now, or if there are questions or suggestions you want to send to the task force, or again, if there are grammatical changes you want to suggest, those can go to Terry Wintering. On that note, before I give you a chance to weigh in there, Dr. Chapman, was there anything that you want to say about any of these on the first reading?
Yes, I would also just like to add, this whole section deals with instruction, and so it's not just the committee that has weighed in on it, but also Dr. Strike has weighed in on it, and several other people that have information pertaining to these exact policies and how we work with them in the school district. I also wanted to add, just as a reminder for those that are listening, some of our policies went above and beyond really what they should. They were somewhat redundant to state statute, so we're cutting a lot of that out per the recommendations, because it is redundant to repeat the state statute. And then, we will still maintain our manuals, our procedural manuals, that really is more of a how-to, which you'll be reviewing toward the end, more like probably June 2015, when you see those again. But it is a significant undertaking, it requires a lot of people weighing in and adding to it, so it's not just, you know, this small committee that's looking at it. But we definitely appreciate your attention to it, because even though we've all read them numerous times, every time I read it, I catch something different. So it's very helpful to have people's input, and, you know, if there's anything that we need to look at or reconsider, we definitely are open to that. So, I think, having said that...
Mrs. Mack?
I'd just like to add that it's been really helpful, because there's a couple of things that I've had questions on, and it's been great to be able to talk to members of the committee and to you also, to find out what the rationale was, why that happened. So thank you for having that information available.
Any of these that you want to talk about tonight, or again, there's a process of submitting questions, recommendations, and I can't say enough times, I probably should say it every month through June of 15. Thank you to Dr. Chapman, and you, Dr. Denny, and Donna Bisfield, and Sarah Goodburn. This is a lot of work, ladies and gentlemen. It needs to happen, but it's a lot of work. Okay, Mrs. Zelen?
All right, very good. Let me scroll down here a ways. So we, through 91, there, we have a little extra reading to do. Again, we will move to reports of the board for middle school sports. Dr. Henson?
Matt Johnson's with us tonight. You know, it's amazing, some of the video, pictures, and stories I've heard about middle school sports. If I can keep a straight face on this, there's a news clip we're going to show you tonight, which absolutely, if this doesn't pull at your heartstrings, we need to resuscitate you. This is just a phenomenal story, but it's one of so many that are going on in the school district. And Matt, I want to congratulate you as well, because this is a huge undertaking, and you've coordinated all of this. You're not off the hook yet, there's still more work to be done.
Right, lots to be done.
But Matt, you're doing a great job with this, and phenomenal feedback in the community. You can also introduce tonight the news clip that we're going to see. So, we wanted to give you an update on middle school sports and where we are.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. Middle school sports is obviously up and running, we're, you know, six, five, six weeks in, and has been a better start than I could have imagined. The schools have been very excited about that. Just to give you some highlights, we have approximately 120 wrestlers at the five middle schools. Each school has anywhere from 20 to 25 students that have come out for wrestling, and that was a sport where it was very hard to predict what type of turnout we would have. And I've been to three of the six meets that we have held thus far, and it has been a very special experience to, as a former middle school principal, to walk into a gym, to see the bleachers very full, and to see these kids go out on the mat and start wrestling, and to have this large group of students cheering these kids on, and I'm not even sure they know each other. And so, having been a middle school principal, and knowing there's a lot of kids out there who are socially awkward, or don't have a lot of friends or social connections, but, you know, find something that they enjoy doing, and to have their peers cheering them on like that was just, it was very inspiring. And the middle school wrestling teams have just flourished and grown and done some really great things.
Well, Matt, before you go on, I think it's really important to add, if I may, that the high school wrestlers are coming and supporting their middle school theaters. And we have several volunteer high school wrestlers that are coaching, and it's just so tremendous to see them in the audience, supporting students that they'll never probably even be in high school with, but they're just so excited about it. So, I think that's really, says a lot about our high school students as well, but...
Yeah, I will admit, wrestling was the one sport I was very concerned how it would take off, and it was the first one we were doing, and so it's been, it's just been really awesome. With cross-country, we currently have over 400 middle school students participating in cross-country. I mean, the participation levels are so high that the schools are trying to find ways to get the kids to all be able to participate in the meets, because those are limited space opportunities. But they're doing it, and they're doing a great job with it. And we've had about three meets thus far, and they've got some more meets to go. It's been really cool, and you're going to see a news clip here in just a second that will really illustrate how important this whole endeavor has been. I got an email from a middle school teacher that worked for me at Westridge a couple weeks ago, and this is one of those things that I didn't even picture, being a part of this whole concept at the time that I was developing it. And she emailed me, it was like one sentence, "I just had a student come in this morning before school who said he needed to get his math grade up so he could wrestle." And she's been teaching middle school in the district for about 15 years, and that's the first time that's ever happened. And just the fact that a student was connecting the importance of his academics to being eligible to be a part of something he wants to be a part of was just, I mean, the email made my day. I mean, I had a great day, the rest of the day, just because of that. The sponsorship and the partnership we've had with First National Bank has been incredible. The support that they've given us, not only financially, but being involved and being out there and helping us get this going, I can't overstate enough, and I wanted to make it, put it on the record, that I enjoy that relationship and look forward to bigger and brighter things with them as a partner as we move in the future. Now I'm going to show you, just to let you know, we have girls' basketball that starts in two weeks, two weeks from today, that starts, and that's going to be, you know, a new experience, and then boys' basketball right after the winter break, which will be, I think, our largest turnout sport of all the ones we have out, but volleyball, I think, will be right behind that, which starts after spring break. But I want to show you a news clip that I don't even really need to say much about other than just watch and listen, but this is one of those stories that you couldn't have envisioned when we started this, but it's not just a testimony to how great middle school sports is, as much as it is a testimony to how great our district is, and how the fact that when this young student and her parents contacted the school about being a part of a cross-country team, the immediate answer was like, whatever we can do to do this. There was no hesitation for one moment from that school, and that's what we do in Shawnee Mission, and that's just a really cool thing. So, I've put this and set this all up with Dr. Henson's help, and now we're hoping technology will work, and that we will have audio for this. And I'm trying to figure out how to scroll down to push play. Love technology.
Matt, maybe try refreshing it.
Yeah. Let's see, where is that on this?
Bowser bar, a little loose.
Uh...
To the right.
Oh, there it is. There it is.
The little circle there, next to the X. There you go.
There we go. All right. Play.
A seventh grader at Indian Hills Middle School in Prairie Village is enjoying cross-country season.
Meg Shermer is visually impaired, but with the help of her coaches and teammates, that doesn't stop her. Fox 4 photojournalist Sarah Thacker shows us this team effort.
I'm doing a one-mile, because I'm in seventh grade. I have had tons of fun.
We're doing great, this is good.
The team is really supportive, and no one really asked questions when I said I wanted to be on the cross-country team. They just said that they would do whatever it is that we needed.
We're rounding the track.
One of the coaches or one of the students will leader on the race. We have a tether, which is, it's a probably two-foot-long yellow cord with a rope on either end.
We're going to hit a different pavement, but it's nice and smooth. We're going to go downhill a little. Here we go. Here we go.
One person holds on to the other end, and I hold on to this end, and we just, you know, go for a run. I have different people guiding me, because so many people want to know what that's like.
She likes to do steps, so like, let's just say, we're going up a big hill, five more steps, and then we go back, and then we go up, and then five more steps until we go like down.
You're good.
We do a lot of communication, so they will tell me when I'm coming up to a street, and maybe when we have some rough spots, they'll tell me that too. It can be hard at times, but it's still very fun.
Some of the things that we don't think about as much, like a little tiny dip in the ground, really affects Meg, so we've gotten a lot better at warning her of what's coming up.
Big crowd.
I don't like to be treated differently. I want to be treated, you know, normal.
There you go.
So, they'll come up to me, they might say, oh, this is really cool, but, you know, they'll be like, oh, it's Meg, she can do this.
No holding her back.
That's so awesome.
That was photojournalist Sarah Thacker.
And today's meet at Shawnee Mission West was Meg's third meet ever. Congratulations. Keep on running, Meg. It's great fun.
Yeah, you, how many miles?
Anybody need to be resuscitated? Okay. So, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions? Yes?
I am curious, you mentioned the partnership that we have, and I know certainly they've been very nice in their financial support. Are the employees, is there a certain branch that is helping with it?
Well, not necessarily. They have, I think, six branches in the Johnson County area, and three or four of them are in the Shawnee Mission attendance area. And so, they're looking to have some more employee-type involvement, and they're also working, I'm working with them, on the potential development of a scholarship that could be given to middle school students to be used for college, maybe in the form of a CD or a bond or something, so, yeah.
Matt, I have one comment, too. You mentioned, you know, connecting academics with your athletics as well, and you have to keep your academics up. I know this is something, and you probably, as a middle school principal, you face that, trying to impress on the kids that when you go to high school, you guys, it's really going to count, and now it's counting in middle school, and I think that is great training ground for them.
It's preparing them for high school.
Absolutely.
In a new way.
Yep, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to the board financial report.
The board financial report, obviously, it's the August report. It's early in the fiscal year, and so you'll see a lot of percent received that are very low. It's early in the year, and so that's certainly to be expected. Would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Any board members? I guess not. Very good. All right. We will move on to comments for board members. Do we have any this evening? And then Mrs. Goodby, I will call on you. Mrs. Neighbors?
We've been able to attend some staff meetings, and we're working our way through the district, and it's always exciting to see the teachers and have the opportunity to express our gratitude. And so, it's just a fun time to meet the people that are doing all the great work. So, thank you for inviting us into your buildings and sharing your faculty meetings with us.
Mrs. Bisfield?
Mine is more for this next upcoming meetings. We have October 27th here, so we want to make sure that we get October 6th out for the...
Absolutely. October 6th will be a special board meeting, but it will be a regular public meeting, just like this. And then we'll have our usual meeting on the 27th, which is the fourth Monday. That's our usual meeting. But the 6th will be a special meeting where we will address the mail-in bond and the ballots. Yes, Mrs. Mack?
I just wanted to take a moment and thank Representative Rucker for coming here to thank our superintendent. I think all of us here totally agree, he's doing a lot, got a lot of stuff going on. So thank you. You have a busy schedule as well, so thank you for making the time to come. And Steve Roberts also has a very busy schedule, and he's here tonight, so thank you for being here.
Any other comments? Dr. Denny?
I'm just looking forward to Thursday morning.
Yeah.
We'll be at the breakfast, and I hope to see a lot of friends there.
Absolutely. Absolutely. October 6th will be a special board meeting, but it will be a regular public meeting, just like this. And then we'll have our usual meeting on the 27th, which is the fourth Monday. That's our usual meeting. But the 6th will be a special meeting where we will address the mail-in bond and the ballots. Yes, Mrs. Mack?
I just wanted to take a moment and thank Representative Rucker for coming here to thank our superintendent. I think all of us here totally agree, he's doing a lot, got a lot of stuff going on.
Absolutely. It will be a great morning. We'll hear the state of the district, and please mark your calendars for September 30th as well. Dr. Willard Daggett is an amazing speaker. He will have, he will fill your brain with all the things that, where education is going, and is an incredible visionary. So I hope you can attend, just RSVP. We would love that, too, to Mrs. Wintering. Any other comments? Okay, Mrs. Goodburn?
I move that the Board of Education recess to executive session in order to discuss personnel matters regarding non-elected personnel.
Second?
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. We will, let's see, what time will we resume? There'll be no further business conducted. Did you read the bottom there?
I did not. The meeting will reconvene at?
9:15.
9:15. No further business will be conducted following the executive session.
Thank you all for coming this evening. It's nice to see some bodies filling our gallery here, but thank you very much.
I can. It's warm in here tonight, isn't it?